Hi everyone, Pastor Galen, Lead Pastor at Cheyenne Hills Church. Thank you so much for joining us on this podcast. We hope that these podcasts will be a real encouragement to you on your spiritual journey. You can also connect with Cheyenne Hills at cheyenehills.org. Hope you enjoy the program. Well, hello everybody and welcome to the podcast. Wow, what a special group of people we have with us today, Nathan. I'm so thankful you're here again.
Well, it's a joy.
It's nice to see your smiling face.
Oh, shucks.
Well, today we've got in our presence Susan Edgerton is running for school board and Hank Bailey is running for school board. And actually Hank, you've you've served on the board before, for 10 years, I guess, before.
That's correct.
And this is another term that you're running for. So, so glad you came in. We're both of you, we've got questions we have, and I just want people to be informed. What do you guys believe and what are the big issues? And how are you, are you prepared to answer some of these big issues in our community? It's kind of my, my, so Nathan, you have always have good questions. Do you want to, do you have one to lead off with?
Well, I would love to, but also I wanted to say it's so great to be with you both because I've had the opportunity to see your heart. I've seen you in a few forums. And so to have you here with us in the studio is a, is an opportunity that, that really I think is a blessing to many people who will watch this. And I do have a question, and maybe what I could do is start with you, Mr. Bailey. I don't know if you like to go by Hank or Mr. Bailey.
I think you should just call me Hank.
I'll go with Hank then, alright. So, well, there was a recent news report out of Sweetwater County. And, and I think you know something about this one. But we read of local parents who were concerned because their school district was told that they could withhold information from parents regarding how children would present themselves at school. And that's created a scenario where parents would be informed whether children would receive ibuprofen for a headache, and yet not how their child would identify with their entire existence at school. And so with that kind of concern, my thought, my question for you is, how would you respond to that? And what are your thoughts on that scenario?
Well, I'll tell you a little bit more about the scenario. It wasn't that the staff was told they could withhold information. They were told they must withhold information from the parents. It wasn't, it wasn't a voluntary thing, it was a mandatory thing. And the young man that called me had been teaching there for 13 years. And actually, my son Marcus, who's a physician in Texas, he and this young man were friends. And, and Mark got ahold of me and said, hey, can I have my buddy call you? He's got a legal question, and I said, sure. So he called and he was very, very concerned because he thought his job was in jeopardy. Because he actually spoke up against it at the meeting and was put in his place by the administration. And they even had him, they even had him come in and talk to their lawyer about it. And he was actually told that it was unconstitutional for them to tell the parent that their child was transitioning.
I'm sure as a lawyer, that's something that really grabbed a hold of you.
That grabbed a hold of me. And I told him in non-certain terms that what he was told was not accurate. And that if he had any more difficulties, get ahold of me. But he was, he was right to push back. He had every right to push back. And so he did, and it wasn't long after that, that, and I actually, I actually sent him the case law and some other things that he could look at. So he was informed. And it wasn't long after that, that he said that they were backing off that. And, and actually, what I read in the paper, they explained themselves in a way that I don't think was truthful. They tried to sweep it under the rug a little bit. But I am absolutely opposed to withholding that kind of information from parents. I would never support that. There's not a constitutional issue in terms of doing that. Obviously, you cannot discriminate against a transgender because, because of that. There's a 2020 Supreme Court case authored, interestingly, by Neil Gorsuch, that, that prevents discrimination, but this is a different issue.
I so appreciate, and Nathan, I ask you this question, it's like, who, who on this, this board can actually give a, some, some legal advice? Because this board, the school board, deals with a lot of legal, legal issues. And you told me Hank Bailey's in the, in the mix, and I can see now why you were saying, you've said that this is important. Just real quick and make sure I'm accurate on this. Hank is actually running for the at-large position.
Right, right.
And so everybody will have an opportunity to vote for that, is that correct?
That's right. And I think it would be important, again, to just kind of reiterate that this year is the first time in Laramie County where a new method of voting is going to happen.
Yes.
We're going to have one at-large seat. And then all the other candidates will be running in different, they call them triads. But on the ballot, I think it's going to look like area one, area two, area three. And you're right, Hank is running for that at-large position.
And everybody can vote for two, that'll be one, the at-large, and then one of their own triad.
That's right.
And then Susan, you're in which triad you run in?
The South Triad.
You're the South Triad, which is that a one, two, or three?
That would be area one.
Area one. So what's, you've obviously got, you know, a few issues probably that you have, or the reason you're here is probably because, can you give us, why are you here? What's the issues that you see that really kind of motivated you to put your name in the race?
Thank you for that question. So as a disgruntled grandmother, I've spent since COVID really delving into what the school board does, how they've affected my grandchildren. And then I also have a daughter that's going to start student teaching here in just a couple of weeks, and what will her future look like? And so I'm just very passionate about all of those issues. It started with masking our children, the possibility of perhaps a COVID injection, which has not happened. The board has never gone to that extent. But there's been other issues, calling parents domestic terrorists. And yes, that actually did happen, and I spoke about that. We have sexually explicit books in our secondary schools. I mean, the list could go on and on.
Not only that, I know that you're aware of the curriculum, and that's, that was an issue. I know it's a big issue for you. You, I think you've actually been participating or certainly attending the school board. So it's not like you're completely outside of the realm of how this works. And I think you've, you've had yourself involved in, for sure in the curriculum. I know that was a, an issue with you from early on, yeah.
Well, that actually is a wonderful lead-in to another question that comes to us. Since the last time I had the opportunity to speak with you. And in Nitrana County, recently, there was an engagement with the local school board there. And they were told about too, and we find this on the Cowboy State Daily News. They were told about very, very explicit books that were in their local school libraries. Now, these are the kind of books that if they were, would have been sold in, in a store, or if they would have been, say, behind a counter or something like that, in a, in a convenience store. They would be labeled as pornography. And yet they were told that they would not, the, the school board there determined that they would not remove those books from the school, the library bookshelves, because they wanted kids to have access to different things. I'd love to know, as a future school board member, if, if you are elected, what your thoughts would be if someone comes with sexually explicit material? How you would respond to that in school libraries?
I was asked that question by the Tribune editors. And here's what I told them, that at the last workshop that they had, we have three different options. You can form your child's library reading list as an opt-in with different, we'll say, basketball, baseball, football, frogs, astronomy. You can opt them out of certain genres, like the sexually explicit and graphic books. Or you can opt them out of the library altogether. But I say, going back, at first I was comfortable with parents doing a hard opt-in, where if that was the genre they wanted their children reading, that that was fine. But now I'm, I'm just not okay with that even, if it doesn't have an educational quality to it. If it's sexualizing our children, I don't want it in there. And so I went on record saying that, and that's my position.
Very good. Mr. Bailey, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm total agreement with Susan. I thought she made one of the smartest statements I've heard this entire campaign season. And I've, I've used it, but I've given you credit for it. When she said, show me how these books increase proficiency in, in language, English, you know, any of the stuff. Show me how that happens. That was a brilliant statement, and I've used it repeatedly. I'm totally against the, what I consider to be the over-sexualization of our young people. And it, it really frustrates me when some of the candidates say, you're book banning. We're, we're, we're not in favor of book banning. This is not book banning.
That's right.
Parents who want their children to have access to that material, all they have to do is go to the county library.
That's right.
Or better yet, easier yet, just go on your iPhone or your tablet or whatever. And, and you can get that stuff. But I, I do not think it's appropriate for the public school system. And I think then those books should be eliminated.
I asked you before we actually started, Hank, that you were telling me you served for 10 years, and now this is your second term. And one of the questions I had is that, what kind of courage does it take? I mean, to say these things in this environment is, is one thing. To be able to say that in a, in a public environment, to stand, how, how much courage is it going to take to, to make some of those stands?
Well, it takes courage. It absolutely takes courage. And when I was on the board before the 10 years I was there, I was, I was blessed to have wonderful people to serve with. A lifelong friend, Brian Kopsa, has served with me, you know, devout Christian. I mean, he and I grew up together, we're like brothers. And so, and others, I mentioned him because he's such a dear friend. We had some controversial subjects that we had to deal with, but nothing like what's going on today. But even back then, when those subjects came up, you know, there were some tense times in front of the, in front of the public. And you have to be willing to take the heat for what you believe in. You made a comment earlier about, or somebody had made a comment about setting aside their, their, their standards or their values or whatever. I don't agree with that principle at all.
No, I've interviewed, I've talked to some school board people, I've talked to administrators. I've, and basically, and these are good people. I mean, they are wonderful human beings. They just have a different view of things than I do. But, and that's one of the things I've come to understand. But their view of things is one of, they, they just have a, a big tolerance because they say that, well, personally, I may believe this, but corporately, I need to be this. And I, and I think Nathan and I have had some of these conversations. Do you have to do this when, if, if, if you're elected, aren't you asked to? We are, we're saying, we want this value on this board represented, and that's what elections are about, I think. And quite frankly, it's why, that's what got me involved in this whole process. It's like, we need to, there's a lot of power on this board.
That's right.
A lot of power on this board to influence our, the hearts and minds of our kids. And, but it's going to take a lot of courage to, to pull that off. Because you have a personal, personal idea, can you make that a public, make that in a public arena?
If I could add one more comment about the courage aspect. When you're in the minority on the board in terms of your views and values, which for the, for the most part, for the 10 years I served, I was usually in the minority. Sometimes a minority of two. And that becomes particularly difficult.
Yep.
But it becomes even more important to speak out.
That's right.
It does, and that's honestly, that's, go ahead.
I was just going to say, absolutely on that. And parents and stakeholders, whoever's listening, we've got two courageous women that are sitting on the school board right now. And when you see them fighting for you, please let them know. Please email them, give them a phone call and say, hey, thanks for sticking up for me.
Yeah, and this, this whole line of questioning that we're walking through right now really comes down to that underlying question. When we talk about why a school board trustee is an elected position, why is this an elected position? And then the follow-in to that is, who then is the client in education? Because that really kind of gets at the heart of how an individual perform, will perform on a, on a school board. You know, either they're there to advocate just for the teachers, or for the union, or for some outside group, or literally to advocate for families, the very individuals who are actually electing them to that position. So in your, as you think about this, who is the client in education and why? And Mr. or Ms. Susan, would you like to start with that? And then we'll go to Hank.
Sure. So I think that the most important stakeholders would be parents, because their students are directly in, involved. And then after that, grandparents, community members, teachers, so forth. But we, we really need to have an ear for those parents. And there's so many parents out there that they're either both working full-time, or you've got the single moms, and they're trusting the school district to get it right, to take care of their children, to educate them. And we need to make sure that that's what we're doing, is educating them.
That's good. Hank?
Can I share a brief story to explain my answer?
Yeah.
When our son Mark was in first grade, he had a health problem. He, he was sick almost in his entire, I think it was his first grade year. And in and out of the hospital. And doctors diagnosed him with leukemia and lymphoma, and you, you name it, all these deadly diseases. And his glands were swollen out behind, beyond his ears. That's, and five or six different specialists in this community had diagnosed him with all of these things. On the day they were going to do biopsies on his glands, I took him out of the hospital here, and I took him to Fort Collins. And all along, my wife and I said, do you think it's tonsillitis? Do you think it's his tonsils? Oh no, Mr. Bailey, that's, that's too simple. It's much worse than that, it's much more complicated than that. I took him out of the hospital, I took him to an ENT down in Fort Collins, Dr. Bruce Smith. He looked in his throat, looked at me, and he said, Mr. Bailey, your boy needs his tonsils out. He said, I'm not worried about him, I am however worried about you. We had, we had struggled with that. Now, I don't say that to demean doctors. What I, what I say that parents really know a lot about their children. And what I've heard throughout this campaign season a lot is, trust the experts. Trust the educators, they know best. I just believe that parents are, and grandparents in certain circumstances, they're the client. They're really the client. And, and so one of the planks in my platform is, I, I will respect the rights and the roles of parents in the education of their children.
That's well said.
Okay.
From both of them, I don't know. I have a question, but I don't know. Did you have something you're jumping into there?
No, not really. I just, I just, amen. I think, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think, really across our nation. We've seen, we've seen parents come to the school boards and get shut out, shut down, or whatever. And it's like, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that every parent responds tactfully in front of those, I get that. Some of them, probably you could use a little more tact, but at the same time, to be able to listen and say, okay, we value, we value what we're hearing here. That's, I think that's a, it's huge, it's important. And people got to, got to know, will you guys, if you get elected, will you listen to what parents have to say?
Yeah, that's, I think that's good. Well, here's a question that kind of gets to a deep subject that really has come to the fore over the last couple of years. Let me just, I think it's a pretty simple question, and I'd love to hear what your thoughts are on it. And Hank, we'll start with you, but do you think that America was founded to be inherently racist? Or if it's just purely racially neutral? Or is it like any other culture that's ever come on the civil, on the planet, where there are ups and downs? But what we have been fighting for is that there is a self-evident truth that all men are created equal. What are your thoughts on, on that particular topic?
My thoughts on that topic run deep. I believe the United States is a divinely inspired, created nation. I believe the Constitution and the Declaration were divinely inspired. The men that crafted those documents were not perfect. But I, I believe those men were guided by God in what they did. And I know that would terrify some people for me to say that, but I really believe they were inspired to do what they did. I believe those are the two most perfect governmental charters in the history of the world. And I do not believe it's based in racism at all. Racism has existed almost from the beginning of time. And it will be here at the end of time, unfortunately. But the United States is not an inherently racist country. And this community is not inherently racist. I, I've lived here my whole life, it's not. Our school district is not inherently racist. Are there, are there racist individuals? Certainly, there always will be, unfortunately. It's, it's sad. But I don't believe, one race should be taught that they are inherently victims and oppressed. And I don't believe another race should be taught that they are inherently oppressors. So.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Hank. And Susan?
Thank you, Hank, for that great answer. And I will say, I totally agree with you. So there's two sources where I get my history. One is wallbuilders.com, one is Hillsdale College. So when listening to David Barton in wallbuilders.com, he has such a different take on the 1619 project. He says, let's go ahead and talk about the year 1619. Let's talk about slavery there. The first slave to be owned was a black man who ended up going to court to obtain another black man, because he said that this man is so lazy, he'll never amount to anything. But do we teach that? No, we don't. Do we teach, do we teach about all of the, the great people of color back in those days? We do not. For instance, Harry Hoosier. Does, does that sound even vaguely familiar? Indiana, the Indiana Hoosiers? Harry Hoosier was a black evangelist, and he went into what was then the wilderness to evangelize. So there's some great people out there. But are we utilizing great resources like Hillsdale College or Wall Builders? I don't think that we are.
Interesting, I didn't know that.
Yeah, this is, this is a great, you know, it's interesting, people originally understood.
I know, she's always come up with good stuff.
People originally understood about Harry Hoosier. And the sad thing is, they started this whole legend about 100 years ago or so to try to explain that away. And it was two guys who's gotten a bar fight, and one of them cut the other's ear off, and someone said, Hoosier, you know? But literally, you have this very famous guy from the frontier named Harry Hoosier. And he's very, very important, I've seen his.
Black evangelist.
He's a black evangelist, and there's pictures of him out there. So, yeah, one other thing to add to that is that David Barton explained that back in that time period, you didn't get your picture painted unless you were super famous, super important. And there's, I'd say 30 at least, pictures of black men that I know of. And so I would just dispute anyone that wants to call this country racist from its origins.
Nathan, you and I had a conversation with an administrator about some of these topics and, and his view on some of those topics. And, and he, he thinks that we need these books that are maybe oppressive oppressor, that, I mean, because there are people that feel that way, they need to come alongside, and it, it actually helps them feel, you know, accepted, or whatever. And, and the question I think we both had is like, well, where's the stories that are redemptive? We're the ones that are heroic. Because that is, that is, in my view, that I'm being in my pastor hat here, but that's, that's sinful man. I'm not saying there's not been racism, I agree with you, Hank, there's, that's, but that's sinful man. That's not because of person's skin color, that's sin. And we need to call it what it is, but the, the fact that we're inherently racist, it's like, there's a, there's a lot of wonderful, incredible stories. This is one that I didn't know. But there's many stories like that, that we could be, you know, bringing for those kind of stories to accelerate, you know, the Mexican or the African or the African-American, you know, those are the things that's, it's the greatness that our country has an opportunity for.
Right.
Everybody's got that opportunity.
That's one of the, the old sayings, and I don't know where it was first started, but every culture has its good, its bad, and its ugly. All the way through Western civilization. What's extraordinary about the United States of America is that we have so much more good, genuine good, world-changing good. And literally, when Alexis de Tocqueville talked about American exceptionalism, or that we're an exceptional country. Let me just touch on this for a second. A lot of times we use the term exceptional today as meaning we're, as a sort of primacy. You know, it doesn't mean that we are the prime foreign policy expert in the world or something. What it literally meant when Alexis de Tocqueville talked about was, what we're seeing in North America is the exception to every rule I can find throughout Western civilization. And it is exceptional in that sense. And so when we talk about who we are, it doesn't mean that we claim to be perfect. It means that we have been fighting steadily for all men understood to be created equal.
Yeah, that's good.
That's right.
We were, we were asked, I don't know if you were asked, but I, I was asked by the newspapers about racism, should that be taught in our schools? I said, certainly, that's part of our history. We fought a, we fought a civil war, 600,000 people died to eradicate that. So yeah, that's part of our history, it can be taught, but teaching that we are still, that there's something inherently bad about us, or, or inherently racist is, is wrong. You know, you mentioned De Tocqueville. He said, I looked for the greatness of America. It wasn't in her factories, it wasn't in her fields, it wasn't, you know, it was in their churches.
Right. That's exactly right.
It was amazing statement.
Which gets to the point where there is no culture that can be amoral. Everything has some sort of moral norm, some sort of standard it holds itself to. And so with that in mind, may I pose the next question? And I think I oppose it first to Susan, and then we'll come back to Hank, but here it is. When we talk about the role of the public school teacher, and we have so many good public school teachers. I, I, over the last couple of years, I've received a number of phone calls from really good public school teachers. And so I'm really thankful for them. But when it comes to a public school teacher, are they supposed to follow the exact standards of whom? The United States Department of Education, the local school board? Should they be given some freedom in the classroom? At the end of the day, also, who are they most accountable to? Are they most accountable to the school board, to the parents? And how does that work? When we talk about, on, on a daily basis, what the schoolroom looks like? What are your thoughts on that, that role and that accountability?
That is a great question, and thank you for that. So if I can just backtrack, I know, I still know the names of every single elementary school teacher that I had. I loved my teachers, they were professionals. I know, I still know the names of my daughters and my sons' teachers all through elementary school, and about half of the junior high and high school teachers. And why is that? Because I was in their classrooms all the time, helping out, side by side, assisting, doing whatever it took to get curriculum taught. And this was back before we had the 19 and under quota for third grade and under. And so my daughter started out in a classroom in California with 31. So most days, there was at least three, if not four, parents in there volunteering to keep sanity, to just break the groups up, and to get the curriculum taught. And that was so great that, number one, they let us in, but that we knew everything that was going on. It was a transparency issue. And I, I just wonder, because we're so busy these days, are we still being transparent? I question that. So when all the debate about Witten Wisdom came up, I talked to my daughter about that. We went online to YouTube, we looked through some of the books. And I said, perhaps maybe in three or four days after the classrooms are settled in, let's just talk to their teachers and see if we can at least get some sort of lesson plan as to what they're doing week by week. So Aubrey's second grade teacher was so great, she would say, this is what we did last week. And then you'd flip the paper over, this is what we're doing this week, these are the books. If you want to take a book home and look at it over the weekend, let me know, I'll stick it in their backpack. I was comfortable with that. Bear's teacher, it was a little different in that he emailed everything. And that was still fine, because at least then we knew what was going on. But keep in mind, parents, is that there's also specials that they have, social emotional learning being one of them. And I just encourage every parent out there to say, hey, what specials did you have? And if it's social emotional learning, to really ask them, what did you do? What did you talk about? When I had this conversation with my grandson, he was very talkative, very chatty about that, and about how some of the things in there he didn't like. And so that was a conversation with my daughter about opting them out.
I'm glad you brought up social emotional learning, because there's a lot of things that I've discovered goes underneath that umbrella.
There's a ton of things.
It's like, everything kind of slides under there, and you need to, transparency is really important in this area.
Right, right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so back to your question, now that I've kind of laid the tapestry down. I think that, number one, we need to be transparent about what we're teaching these children and what we're not. I think that number one, we need to be transparent about what we're teaching these children and what we're not. Part of wit and wisdom, okay, so you have a teacher's with a master's degree and they're doing scripted work. As in, it's all laid out for them, they read a sentence, and then there's this little blurb about what the children are supposed to say back to them. How they're supposed to respond. Again, they have a master's degree. So it leaves me scratching my head thinking, what are we doing here? They spent all this time becoming a professional and we're giving them something scripted. And something quite frankly, that's not getting the job done. You've seen the test scores, I've seen the test scores. We, we really need to be doing something else. And so from that point on, I would say, I think they need to have freedom to take things away or add things to it. That would have to be factual, but teach things that will help get those texts, those test scores up. And I'll say mathematics, because we're doing common core math. I don't think there's anything wrong with doing traditional math right alongside of it, because not every child learns the same way. My daughter shadowed a third grade teacher last year who was doing math in all kinds of different ways to try to get the light bulb on, to get it to click. And I'm in total favor of that. But when you get into higher grades and you start being political with your views. Or start trying to persuade them in other areas, I disagree with that. I would just say, please stick with curriculum and educating them on things, math, English, science, English language arts, and those subjects.
What are your thoughts Hank?
This lady needs to get elected. That's what I think.
That's a great, that's a great answer, very informed.
I believe in academic freedom within the confines of an approved curriculum. I love the Liberty Commons School down in Colorado. I, I looked at their curriculum, the classical curriculum. I mean, I just, that's, that's my philosophical bent. I believe the classroom ought to be a place where, where students learn math, science, history, English, the fine arts. And we stay away from politics and trying to indoctrinate students to go in a certain way culturally, socially, or politically. I'm, I'm just, I'm really opposed to that. I do agree with the comment that the vast majority of our teachers are great. I, I have four teachers in my family, three who, three children who teach in this district. I know how much they love their work, I know how much they love to teach. They have been concerned about some of the stuff that is, is coming at them. And, and so I have a granddaughter that's a teacher in Colorado, so I love teachers. I fought for them when I was in the board for 10 years in terms of pay and benefits. And what some people don't know is that I, I do love teachers. But, and I do believe in academic freedom, but within the confines of an approved curriculum.
Yes. I think that's very well said, because what we're talking about there is that there are certain standards, of course, that you're trying to set. And that you understand your role as a trustee on a school board. And, you know, we, we're, we're coming toward the end of our available time. I guess there's just one last question, though. What is the primary purpose of education? Now, you hear a lot of different things. We're training good citizens, we're training people for a career. We're training people to be lifelong learners and self-sufficient adults. But at the end of the day, one of the things that people like to bring forward is, we're actually trying to train them how to think. How to think for themselves, how to actually be able to leave school and still continue that lifelong path. What are your thoughts on that? And, and it kind of shows the background of what should be the major influence in school.
Ultimately, the purpose of education is to help young people achieve their God-given potential.
Susan?
I think that's a very well stated answer. I would have said, a lifelong learner to just make sure that they have the tools that they need to, to carry out with life.
Wow, Galen.
Good stuff. Well, you know, I, we've said that in, in our school here is that, you know, you, you want to teach kids how to read, learn. And so then, then they learn from that point on, it's just lifelong. And so I think that's, they got to learn to read. I think that's the most important thing for me. And I'm glad to hear your guys' answers, and I actually am thrilled to hear your answers. Thanks Nathan for bringing the, the tough questions. Thank you guys for being here. Hank, it's really great to meet you, and Susan, thank you so much for coming in. And, and we're going to continue on and try to give you exposure to ideas and what's going on. And that's, I think, our, our role here at Cheyenne Hills. And so what we've always said when we sign off is that for you and for these candidates, we all need to be strong and very courageous. God bless you guys.